We will bring this Select Board meeting on November 24th to order. And we will start by doing the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any items to be added or deleted to the agenda today? Sarah, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Onto administrative matters.
Make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve orders for 11:24, 25 in the amount of 1,384,333 and 38 cents. So let me say that numerically, 1,384,333 dollars and 38 cents and $800 and 17 cents.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 11:10, 25.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, announcements. Do we have any announcements?
No, just a reminder that the, um, the office is going to be closed at noon tomorrow.
Okay.
And then close through, through Thanksgiving for the rest of the week.
Correct.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, that's noon on Wednesday.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's noon on Wednesday. And close for the rest of the week.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
No secret, no secret meetings or anything?
Okay. And now we will go to public comment. Have anybody for a public comment? Okay, let's see, Carol has her, Carol Gates has her hand raised. Go ahead, Carol.
So I want to know what the meeting was last Monday night at the office that I wasn't allowed in. And how, and it said that the office was closed last week, but then all of a sudden there was a meeting on Thursday night of this planning commission that wasn't scheduled. What was that all about?
Brian, you said, uh, you said Monday night and then you said Thursday night. Which night are you speaking of?
Monday night where the planning commission met without anybody there behind closed doors, another secret meeting. Sarah Buxton was there. I have the video of the cars there Monday, last Monday night. Was an unscheduled meeting and I wasn't allowed in the office. I banged on the door and I wasn't allowed in. And then all, and then all of a sudden there was a meeting Thursday night.
The sheriff confirmed that they were all there.
I thought we weren't holding secret meetings anymore. I thought we were doing things transparent. It's almost like your permit, Seth. We put in an appeal, but we never heard anything back. You know, from the one you tried to rob the town of, you and Greg. How come we're not hearing anything back on these, on these things? Answer please.
We've taken your public comment, Brian.
So you're above the law?
So you're above the law right now, Seth? Is that what you're telling me? And you can just rob the town? You can have a sand and gravel pit without a permit? Oh, that's right, because you said you own the town and I should fucking leave, right?
They shut you off.
Not yet.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, they did.
Okay, so due to swearing, we're just gonna remove you from this, uh, public comment.
Yeah, suck my dick, Seth.
I'm warned, you've been warned.
Yeah.
Okay. We're all set, moving on. Okay. Somebody else for public comment? Let's move on to business. Um, and, um, letter A, we have zoning rewrite and public hearing schedule.
All right. So, um, on Thursday, the planning commission, um, voted the final version of the zoning bylaw, the amendments to the zoning bylaw. And from there, it comes over to us. Um, so now we have an opportunity to do a couple of things. Um, we definitely have to have a hearing within not less than 15 days from getting it, but not more than 120 days from getting it.
Okay.
Um, if we want to make any changes to the zoning bylaw, um, then we have to have, um, basically, we have to time the public hearing so that we make the change. We could either like have a hearing, then make changes and then have another hearing. Or we could, over the course of the next, you know, couple of weeks, gather information, work with, um, Logan Solomon, who's our, um, our consultant from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and have him, um, work up a draft for us that we would look at, um, potentially to incorporate any changes that we want. And then, then we warn our public hearing, there needs to be at least 10 days. I know this is incredibly complicated. There needs to be at least 10 days from when we decided to make changes to when the public hearing is so that the public can have time to see the new draft with all the new changes. Um, since passing the zoning, um, bylaw amendment on Thursday, we've heard from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission that our, um, our flood hazard area regulation, part of, um, one section of our bylaw, still needs to be updated.
Okay.
So with that, and they, and they put forward two options for us for up, for updating our flood hazard area regulation and bylaw. Um, one is to do it through the zoning bylaw process, which we do have time to do. Um, the other is to do nothing now and wait another year until the state puts out their model, um, proposal. Um, another option would be to take the flood, um, hazard bylaw out of zoning and just make it an ordinance. But whatever those, whatever direction we go, short of doing nothing, we know that at least one substantive change is gonna be, is likely to be made. So that's my long way of saying, what I think we will have to do is, rather than setting a hearing tonight for sometime in December, and I'm kind of speaking to Sarah as well as to Seth here, I'm thinking that we ask, I tried to call Logan today to see if he could plug in, like, to today's meeting or like our next meeting, but for him to come and kind of talk to us a little bit about what they've recommended and what they think with the flood hazard bylaw. Um, and also answer any questions that we may have, um, about the zoning rewrite. I've forwarded the information and the reports to you and Megan. Um, I don't know that you necessarily want me to walk you through the entire zoning bylaw changes, but I do think that maybe some time between now and our next meeting, if like you and Megan go through it, if there are things you have questions about, or you're like, I'd really like to change that, then maybe at our meeting on the 50th, or potentially we call a meeting for the 22nd, we take the flood hazard information that we've gotten and any other changes that we're thinking, maybe we want to tweak a little bit. And at one of those December meetings, we, um, use Logan to, you know, go back and update the draft for us. And that's the draft that we would have, um, a public hearing on sometime in January. Um, and the hearing doesn't have to be, I mean, we've already had a three hour hearing on all of the zoning bylaws. So this could just be a hearing, you know, focused mainly on the changes that have been made. Um, Sarah has told me that the day, the date that we're scheduled to vote all of the articles for town meeting is January 26th. So it's the last Friday in January. So my, I'm hoping that what we can do is, like internally, figure out their other changes to zoning bylaw, get those sort of on paper in December, have a hearing early January, but at the latest, um, our September 6th, or September, I wish it was September.
December.
Yeah. Oh, or we could have a hearing sometime in January, like our January, one of our January meetings. And then if there's anything else we hear from the hearing, you know, we could further tweak. Um, but then at that last meeting when we're voting, you know, all the articles for town meeting, we vote yay on the bylaws and then they get warned for townwide vote on town meeting day. Um, in addition, one, one change that you probably aren't aware of is, um, the planning commission decided to take out the short term rental components of it and have that be a standalone ordinance. So that it could be, if things, if changes are needed, that it would be easier for us as the select board to change it. So I'm thinking that I would have something drafted for everyone to look at and for the public to comment on, largely based on what the planning commission already has heard comments on, you know, has been working for six months on. And vote that sometime either in one of our December meetings or our January meeting so that it's on the same pathway as the zoning bylaws. Meaning if there's anyone who wants to petition and have a whole town vote on it, that it was, they would still be able to do it in time for the, um, to get it on the ballot for town meeting. So that's, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, um, but I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense.
Well, I mean, it, it does. Um, Sarah, what are your thoughts on it as far as timeframe? I mean,
Yeah, I went over the calendar with Sarah today about, um, our meetings. Just to be clear to the public, right now, we have two warned meetings in, the Select Board has two warned meetings in December, um, from our original calendar, um, set after town meeting day at the organizational meeting, um, which is, the December meetings change from the, um, second and fourth Monday to the second and third Monday. So, uh, we have, or yeah, we have a meeting on the sixth and the.
Wait, I think it's the. Right?
I'm sorry, what?
The eighth, not the sixth.
Yeah, the eighth, right. Um, and then the following Monday, the 15th. So potentially some of these changes will require us to meet on the 22nd or the 29th. In addition to, and that would just be for zoning. That would just be for the zoning rewrite, not budget.
Yeah, and what I, I mean, if Logan could come to our meeting on the 15th, and, and I don't know if it's realistic for Seth and Megan to have like digested and be ready to make any comments on saying like, hey, I see this in the zoning regs, what does this mean? Or I'd like this to be a little different. Um, you know, we could potentially try to do that on either the eighth or the 15th. And then Logan could, um, have, get back to us, you know, with a draft. And then we could do pretty much like a, a quick virtual meeting on anytime, just to approve the draft. Uh, like you said, like a special meeting on either the following Monday. I mean, actually, I'm generally free except for Christmas Eve and, you know, the holidays, but. But I mean, I don't know, I forgot, so when I first was talking with Sarah today, I forgot that we are scheduled the 15th and the 22nd. I'm sorry, the eighth and the 15th anyway. So it's possible. I guess, like, what's your, like, do you, when do you think you might be able to, like, look at the zoning?
I mean, by the 15th.
You think so? Okay. Sarah, what do you think of that? If we, if we shop to like really have, um, if Logan can make it to the meeting on the 15th, then we can make the decision on how to handle the flood pieces and then any other changes that Megan or Seth may want to inquire about. If they're considered substantive and we go forward, then we can just draft that and then tell Logan, you know, we'll approve it as drafted or call a special meeting where we can virtually meet. Um, just, just simply to approve it so that we have the 10 days to notice a hearing in January.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
It does, but it, it, it does put the, um, the importance on everybody reviewing the drafts between now and the next meeting.
By the 15th.
So that we can ask questions on, on December 8th and then have answers by the 15th so that you're kind of potentially all ready to go.
And I, I shared with you, I'll compile it again as well.
I just got that email.
Yeah, I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but, but we have, our minutes as we've gone by have like said, you know, this section, this is what we changed, this section, this is what we changed. So you could even like look at those and just like call your attention to those sections.
Right.
Right.
Um, I mean, I think the biggest change with the zoning rewrite was that we updated it to reflect, you know, changes in the law in the last 10 years. But we also went from, can't remember if it was 13 or 16 different zoning districts down to six. We just kind of made, tried to simplify it. Um, so that's the biggest, I would say, like the biggest change. Um, we did take out short term rentals. That had been a big part of it up until the last meeting and then decided we'll go forward with an ordinance. And I could probably have the draft ordinance done for the 15th. While they're doing their zoning homework, I could be doing the, um, short term rental. And then everyone could look at it, ask questions then, the public can see it, but we wouldn't have to vote it until we want to vote on it. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense to me. It just means we gotta review, basically, we gotta review by the eighth. Really then, so we have.
I, I mean, Sarah, it would be beneficial if we could adopt the ordinance prior to 45 days from, for, you know, vote at 45 days prior to when the warning needs to be signed for town meeting.
That's a great point.
If it is petitioned, we have time to warn it.
Well, then let's try, then why don't I try to get it done for the eighth? And then we vote it by the 15th? So we can talk about it on the eighth. And if Megan or Seth have things that they want to change about it, or the public has things they want to change about it on the eighth, then we can make those changes and vote it on December 15th.
I think the 15th still doesn't allow for 45 days.
Okay. Um, well, you're right, you're right. Unless we had like a special meeting, um, like on the 28th or something of January. But.
Right. Yeah, we, we would have to have a special meeting to sign the warning that further on in the week of, um, January.
All right, why don't I just push, push ahead then and try to get it for the eighth?
Yeah, if you can get a draft written by the eighth and the Select Board can review, then we have questions and adopt on the eighth.
Okay.
And then we, we'd have, um, plenty of time. So really, the planning commission has already discussed what should be in this, um, short term rental.
Generally, yeah.
It's really just putting it in a format of, um, an ordinance versus a section of the bylaws.
Pretty much, yeah. Okay, there's one thing that we should do, and it was a kind of lesson learned, the dog ordinance is, we should probably put in the fees and then the waiver fees for violation from the outset. And so if you want, I'll just make fees like low and meaning like, I don't know, like 50 bucks for a registration fee or like, because it's an annual registration. So I don't know if you think like 50 bucks a year or, you know, I mean, we can make like the, the waiver amount, which is like $25. So if someone does violate it and they don't want to contest it.
I mean, the main thing is to cover the administrative fee of,
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Of, um, maintaining that registry.
Yeah. That's true. So I don't know, and that's great. Greg is planning to be able to do that so long as Sarah, you still think that's a, we could, we can select whoever we want to enforce the ordinance, like it could be a town administrator, it is in some towns.
Yeah.
Greg's planning to do it as the zoning administrator and he's also, he was fine with that.
Yeah, it makes sense to keep it in the zoning administrator's, uh, job description.
So he'd already put together, um, what seemed to be a, an outline of a pretty sim, like simple application process where you fill out a form. And, um, my guess is that he would say it's probably not more than probably a half an hour to an hour's worth of work. And then of course, if you ever have to like chase people down, there's a little bit of work with that.
Yeah, that's where it becomes like, so somebody registers one year, they don't register another year. So you have to send letters and, and, you know, track them down or following up on violations. Where you're, you find out that somebody has a short term rental and is advertising it and you've got to get them to try to register. That's going to be the most time consuming part. At least that's the most time consuming part with the truck, um, the truck permits and following up with those. Um, it would be similar.
So $75?
Yeah, I would, I would think that it, the minimum should be 50 and, um, 75 is probably, um, would cover the cost.
Okay.
Well, then let's go with 75.
Let's go with 75, okay. And then if you guys want to change it, I mean, we, we can always amend it before we vote it. But at least now I know where to start. Um, the other thing that happened, and I'd love your feedback on, at least for drafting purposes, is we did hear in our public, our public hearing, um, that Killington did start with like, um, a rolling application where, you know, say you decided to do an Airbnb in July, you would, um, you know, put in your application and then your anniversary date would be a year from then. And so you'd always just pay your, let's just say it's a hundred dollars and you pay a hundred dollars every year. And then one of the people with the public feedback said that what they found and they switched to is that like November or October was a better time just to do everybody all at once. And that way, it's just like dog licensing. You're not having to go back and forth to see whether someone's, um, um, registration has lapsed. And the only, so their comment, what, and the planning commission thought that in order, it's a trade off because if we do it annually, then we'll just have to do some sort of like a prorata, like a prorated fee for like the remainder of the year. And so if it's, you know, that's what we could do if we wanted to do it on an annual basis. Um, or we could just do it a year from any, anytime anyone ever submits.
Yeah, administratively, that's difficult because you have to keep track of everybody's anniversary dates and it's an ongoing administrative task versus, uh, getting most of them done all at one time. Um, why was it suggested of an October timeline?
So the.
That's probably from Killington.
Yeah, yeah, the guy, um, I want to say his name is, yeah, the guy who commented at our public hearing was, um, an owner of a lot of, uh, uh, units in Killington and Mendon. And he said that Killington did it then because it's just before the season starts. And it just kind of, they got, they thought that that was a good time. You know, people were getting their units ready and rather than trying to do it all in December or on the holidays or in January, but that would be a good time to set it.
Right.
We can choose whatever we want.
Well, um, it's just that some of the other permits or the other, um, licenses you have to get with the town. Um, the truck permits are at the end of March and the dog licenses are April 1st. So, um, as you're, and then you're filing your HS 122 form by April 15th. So you're declaring with the state whether or not you have, um, part of your property or all of your property as, um, a non-residential, uh, versus residential. And I know that those are changing this year, but it just seems like the April 15th deadline would coincide with when people have to fill out their HS 122 forms and a, a more appropriate timeline. But I understand the Killington, they want to do it before the season starts. But I'm, I'm suggesting an April 1st deadline similar to, um, the dog licenses. Uh, I know that the administrative staff in the office does, um, extra hours to register dog licenses. So this, this could be that they would be taking in licenses for two different things.
Yeah.
All right, um, so I'll draft it for that. And if, if you have different thoughts by the time we look at it, you can decide if we want to change it.
Yeah. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that Carol does have her hand raised that has a comment regarding short term rental fees.
Hey, uh, thank you. As a licensed owner, uh, two separate businesses registered with the state, our fees annually to the town are a hundred dollars for each license. So I, I, I think that it should be around that mark, about a hundred dollars per year. If you're going to make money off of that property, you should be paying the fee to the town that's equivalent to what other licensed persons have to pay to the town.
That's helpful. Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, thanks, Carol.
What do you think of that? Want to, want to start at 100?
I mean, that's, that's fine. It, it covers the administration portion. And again, I think until we get into it and not really realizing how difficult it's going to be to, um, keep track of all of these, that, you know, setting a reasonable rate of a hundred dollars is, um, similar to 75, so.
And if we find we don't like it, we can just change, you know, some, for some reason, it's only a 60 day lag time if we need to change it. You know, re-adopt it, amend it.
Right, yeah. So for the first couple of years, we can take a look at it and see if that covers our cost.
Okay.
It's not really implemented to make money. It's more, um, to just cover the administrative cost of implementing a program.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to get the thing, the ordinance to you by the Thursday before. I'll ask Jesse also, just because we have the zoning rewrite section of the website to, that, so that, you know, people in the public can see it. I know the planning commission was really eager to stay up to date on all of the potential changes. So I'll make sure that they have, you know, a copy. So if they want to weigh in on anything, they can at that meeting. Um, and then you and Megan will be ready. We'll see if, we'll confirm with Logan if he can come on the 15th. Does that make sense, Sarah? Or should I ask him for the eighth?
Yeah, you might want to try to get him in on the eighth if we're going to vote.
The 15th.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll ask him for the eighth and then, um, yeah, and then if there's any, and we can decide the flood, the flood matter as well. Um, I think, um, Fred.
Yep, Fred has his hand up.
Um, one thing that, I, I know one thing the planning commission is willing to do is have a joint meeting with the Select Board. So if, if one of these meetings, there's just going to be a lot of, why'd you pick, why'd you do this? Why didn't you put it here or whatever, ever? I know the Select Board on the planning commission, we've been meeting virtually every week for a year, so we'd be glad to come, um, you know, and share our thoughts for you to make the final decision on it.
Okay. Sarah, when you do your agenda planning meeting, will you, um, work with Megan to see what her appetite is for making one, maybe our regular meetings, just also co-warn the planning commission?
Sure. And would we want that to be on the eighth or the 15th?
Uh, let's, let's wait and see if Logan can come because if he can't, then we may want to just balance out the time. we may want to just balance out the time spent.
Correct. Okay.
Exactly. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going with a hundred.
Yep. Yep.
And we're looking for the eight.
Looking for the eight.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, moving forward, uh, animal control ordinance and violation.
All right.
That I have not heard of.
Um, Sarah, do you, I, I just, when I got in tonight, I, I pulled, um, uh, Ryder's report, just the written report for what he's done in terms of his investigation. I haven't read it thoroughly. I'm just skipping it really quickly. Did you have something that you want, Ryder is also here. Um, did you have something that you wanted to talk about, or do you want us to just talk with Ryder about it?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that it was still on the agenda that we're following up on it. But if the investigation is still ongoing, then we don't have, the select board doesn't have a decision to make this evening. Then we can table the discussion. Um, but just to keep it on our forefront, we, we do need to amend the ordinance, um, in order to include the fees.
We already did it.
Oh, we already did that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, sorry, I lost track of that. So, um, so it's just this violation then?
Yep.
Okay, so we can table that until the next.
Well, I, let me just, Ryder's right here.
Okay.
So I'm thinking Ryder that, um, um, it's, well, so I'm, I did see Mary Ashcroft, who's the chair of the select board in, uh, Rutland Town at a meeting a couple of weeks ago and was commenting that we may have this matter and we may be needing to work with them. And she said, well, why, when you're, when you've got your details all collected, why don't we just work with their constable? And at least to the extent of notifying them, the constable of the matter that's going on and the, um, um, need for the dog to be licensed and potentially immunized. Um, that, you know, we could do that. Do you? And then you have the authority already as a law enforcement officer to, um, issue violations of the ordinance, knowing that it does, it doesn't go retroactively back to like May and June and July. So do you want to speak to whether you think we have anything to, you know, violate at the moment? Or do you think that we should just put Rutland Town on notice? We're waiting for the penalties to kick in, at which time a violation would have a little bit more of an impact on this person?
So when does the, when like the, the fees go into effect, you know?
Yes.
I remember it was very, they were passed by us at this period.
Yep, um, Sarah, it was an October meeting. Let me just look at our schedule. Do you remember which? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Do you remember which meeting it was that we had that on our agenda? I think it was, I'm looking at my calendar really quickly. I think it was October twenty-seventh.
I can just confirm that quickly.
Okay.
So how many days is it before it can?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, okay, that's what I thought. Um.
So that would be a few weeks, so that would be, um, thirty-one days in October and thirty-one days, or thirty days in November means it would be, I'm saying, it would be the December, I think it would be Christmas.
Yeah, yeah, no, if, uh, you said it was.
If Sarah's just going to confirm that it was the twenty-seventh, um.
Yeah, Christmas time. So I guess like for round numbers, we can say like starting first of the year essentially.
Yeah, yeah, it would be.
Um, so right now, the, the ordinance he's violating, as it is now, is the, um, dog, the ordinance, I don't know what it exactly is called, but the ordinance says, the, and the dog must be kept under either verbal control or like physical control of the leash at all times.
Yep.
Um, this guy's not doing that with his dog. Um, when I interacted with him, the leash was attached to the dog, but it was just dragging around and it was running off.
Okay.
And I've got several statements in there from people that said the dog has just run up to them. And he's not under verbal, verbal control. You can tell the dog to stand down or come here. It's, it's not working. So violating that. And then secondarily, um, keeping vicious animals, um, because I do have evidence that I have attacked dogs. Um, I, one guy that was bit, I believe two years ago, was nipped.
Okay.
Um, so basically you've got those two violations right there, which of course, because it's all past tense stuff,
Yeah.
fine associated with it. So when I issue a municipal ordinance violation as a law enforcement officer, I have a special municipal ordinance book. I have to write down all the information in it. Um, and then there's that fine associated with it. I don't know if I can even issue like a municipal ordinance violation without having a fine attached. I don't think I can. I think the judicial bureau is going to kick it back. So I think all we can do right now for these things is you guys as the select board can mail this person a letter saying like, notice the violation essentially. Hey, you are in violation of these town ordinances. Um, effective this date, these fines will be associated with these ordinances, uh, should further violations continue. I think that would be a phenomenal idea. Spell it out. Saying like, hey, if this continues beyond this date, so civil penalties will be imposed, it could be imposed against you. Um, and then I'm not sure if you guys want to talk to the constable of Rutland Town. I'll need to reach out and talk.
Yeah, so I'm just opening, I'm looking at, it's the ordinance regulating dog and wolf hybrids. And you are right that, and I do agree that a warning would be a good step to take because you observed it. Um, and we can do a warning instead of a fee, you know, for, um, it would be, is it running at large?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think that, I think it's part of that subsection.
Definition of running at large.
Because it'll say that's not under verbal leash control.
Running large in the town.
Yeah, let's see. Um, yep. Clearly under the verbal or non, yes. So it would be running at large. It's not clearly under the verbal or nonverbal. So the only thing I would say about that is that under the ordinance, there, there are people who are specifically named for having the enforcement power. And so we have, um, named, let me go back up here. Town constable, police officer, animal control officer, humane officer, or any other person designated as an enforcement officer by the select board. So I'm, what I'm thinking is that, um, the letter come from you as a designated enforcement officer, even if we help you to draft it. But it would be from you as a designated officer and doing just exactly what you suggest. Um, and also noting that a second violation would, you know, we can give them a copy of the ordinance too. A second offense would be, at least for running at large, would be a seventy-five dollar fine. And for a potentially vicious dog, it would be a hundred dollar fine or impoundment. Um.
And those are, of course, once those go into effect.
Yeah, yep. Um, and then that way it's not going to the judicial bureau.
Yeah.
Um, until the second, until the second offense.
Well, no, I think it would be the first offense because in the same way, um, let's take cellphone use, for example, as a traffic ticket. So second time cellphone use violations is a higher penalty. So if I put you over for texting and driving, if I give you a warning, be like, hey buddy, next time I stop you, I'm giving you a ticket. The next time I pull you over for texting and driving, I have to issue it as a first violation.
Okay.
Because the person wanted a warning.
Okay.
The second time I'm not doing it, it has to be the violation, like the ticket market. So I'm going to, I, I'm of the impression that for municipal ordinance violations, judicial bureau is going to look at it the same way. Because they, judicial bureau, you know, handles traffic tickets, animals violations. They're going to say, well, you wrote him this letter, but this is the first time you impose a penalty. And this will be the first violation, so.
Yeah.
I will, um, if you, do, do we have an animal control officer right now, or is it like?
So technically Rod is still appointed.
Yeah.
Um, because we haven't appointed anybody else.
Yeah, I can write that letter.
Yeah.
That one you guys prefer. Um, I know the ordinance says I have authority, but I'm saying I don't want to step on it.
Yeah, no, no, you, you will not be stepping on any toes. And I'm also happy to have, help you craft the letter.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and we can just work with Sarah to get it on town letterhead if need to be, maybe, um.
Yeah, I don't know, we've got a sheriff's office at town.
Do you have a view, Sarah, on that, or Seth, do you?
No, I'm, I, yeah, I can put it on town letterhead.
I would think the sheriff's office would be better.
Probably because.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, probably because I'm, if it was the town ACO, obviously.
Yeah.
Town letterhead, because I'm like, I'm not a town employee, you know, I'm separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it'll explain in the letter like my role as the contractor.
Yeah.
I can deliver, I can have that drafted up and, um, I'll get with you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Uh, work on it together.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll reach out to the constables.
Yeah, would you mind just, and just whatever, with your report and just say, you know, if, if it can just be, you know, you to the constable, just saying, hey, I'm calling to let you know the select board talked about it at the meeting. You know, your select board chair is aware of this. But if you need more formal action, she also said it's fine for us to like write them a letter. But we also don't need to like take official action just to let the constable know, put him on notice that this person, we found in our investigation that this person has an unlicensed dog.
Yeah, I'll just shoot him the email.
Yeah.
Give him my case number, say, hey, take a look at this in your system. This is what we got. This is what the town has requested I
Yep.
forward on to you, you know, deal with this information with the police.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I will, uh, this week my schedule is pretty messy, so next week we're better off.
Yeah. That sounds good. Yep. And then, um, if you do get a chance and you can talk to Parks, um, the forest and forest parks and rec, it was good. Yeah.
So I gave the state forester the same copy that I gave you.
Yep.
And I just said, I just told him, hey, uh, talk to these supervisors about what you guys want to do in state level is keeping the loop.
Okay.
Um, last time I talked to him, he said they weren't really maybe going to trespass method side. They were just going to send him a letter being like, hey, the state's mad at you. Um, don't do it again.
Yep.
Um, and I can honestly say that I was called by one of the complainants who gave a witness statement that they had pepper sprayed the dog a few weeks back. When I went up there and actually interacted with the owner of this dog question, it was not a friendly interaction, but I haven't seen him up there since and I've gotten to him with calls.
Okay.
So I'm kind of wondering if just saying, telling the guy, hey, knock it off.
Yeah.
If that has made a difference.
He found a different place to bring his dog.
I have either temporary permanent or he's just more aware of it on the early shore.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Well, it's been going on a long time apparently, so.
Yeah, it has. Um, I like to put an end to it, but I honestly think that, you know, letters notice the violation, like, hey, this is, I'm going to end it. If you think of this, it will be civil action taken against you. I think that is enough.
Yeah.
But thank you for actually getting all these statements, because I think that's what we didn't really have before. And I also make sure you have copies of these, Sarah, too.
Yeah.
That's all.
So rise.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
So Carol has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, um, I would just like to remind anyone that receives a violation from the town amended has the ability to appeal that violation to the town and then to the environmental court. Just so you remind anybody that's listening that may receive a violation from you.
Good, thanks, Carol. Okay, so we're all set with that then, correct?
Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, Ryder, thanks. Um, all right, so moving on, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven budget preparation and reserve funds.
So the most recent draft of the budget is in front of you with all of the changes that were made from the last meeting. Um, a- as it stands right now, now we still have some numbers that need to come in, um, from law enforcement, you know, the public safety budget and, um, some of the, uh, area organizations that won't usually submit until the, you know, closer into December or even early, early January. Uh, but currently we have a four thousand dollar budget increase. So it's essentially level funded.
Okay. Wow, that's great. Um, so I'm looking at the summary and at the top of it, it says full staff hired and three percent rate increase.
Uh, so that summary is from the first draft.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So I have not updated that summary, but I will update it with the most current draft.
Wow, okay. Thanks. Um.
Yeah.
Anything, anything high level that we need to be paying attention to?
No, so I didn't get a chance to update a lot of the reserve funds yet so that you don't have them in front of you. But that's what we, you'll have, um, before now in the next meeting. So it'll just, that just lays out the plan on, we've, uh, all of your department heads have asked for level funding. Um, but that lays out the plan on what they're doing with the balances of the reserve funds.
Okay.
And then you'll need to approve those so that they're, they can be printed in the town report.
And that's what we'll do in January, right?
Yeah, I, I'll probably have that information for you in December and then you'll approve it in January.
A few meetings ago, we had, um, I think it was Wanda, someone came in and they were asking about the policy with regard to, um, needing to petition to get back on the ballot for a special allocation.
Yes.
Um, and I think we said we would take that up at a future meeting. Has that been resolved or do we have to still take that up at a meeting?
No, it, um, Megan, um, decided not to add it to the next agenda. Um, that the board had made a decision in September and some of the organizations had already started, um, submitting their petitions. So for this year, um, a petition is required.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, looks good.
Thanks for all your work, Sarah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yep, the department heads are doing a great job with, um, getting the information in too. So we're ha- we're ahead of schedule right now on the budget process. Now, everybody, just a reminder to submit their reports by the end of the year. So we could start compiling the town report. Uh, but things look good. And then the, um, just on the horizon, the school board does want to attend one of your meetings in December. Um, I believe it's going to be on the eighth. But that, they're requesting like a fifteen-minute, um, update for you on what's going on with the school budget.
Okay, great.
Be a busy meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a couple, yeah, and, and the schedule, um, is still up in the air because of, um, because of these, um, zoning bylaws. But, uh, if we have to add additional meetings, it'll just be to do public hearings or adoption of the zoning bylaws.
Right. Okay.
So that's, that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, great. With that said, I will make a motion to adjourn the select board meeting at six eighteen PM.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.